Haley Wicker. So if you'd like to come up.
Hello, I'm Lindsay Lubitz, Ms. Antioch 2020, and I would just like to thank the mayor and all of you trustees for giving us this amazing opportunity to represent Antioch this year. And I think this year especially is a time where we need to be coming together as a community and helping each other out. So I am so glad that we have had so many opportunities so far to help out our community and I'm excited to see what we can do throughout the rest of our year. So, thank you so much.
And I am Fiona Seraphoff, Junior Ms. Antioch 2020.
Okay. Any citizens wishing to address us tonight?
Yes.
You got a list? Okay, we got Michael Mara at 114 Oakwood. Property owned association.
Hello, everybody. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Mary Peterson. Welcome back to your past position.
Thank you.
It's great to see you.
Thank you.
So on behalf of Oakwood Knowles Property Owners Association, I'd like to inform the board of the status. Previously, it was pointed out that the association would be responsible for conducting a survey. We have conducted that survey or in the process of doing that. So as you know, the association made every effort to satisfy the village and its board members with history petitions, math, engineered surveys, all in regards to the Park Avenue right of way. On December 4th, 2020, OKPOA was informed by village staff, and I quote, "It is going to be the responsibility of the association to create a survey for the residents who reside within the development." It was also suggested that we provide staff with an opportunity to review before sending it out. On the 7th, it was also suggested OKPOA design a specific plan for the pier and park area, properly describe those plans, and then ask all Oakwood Knowles residents if they support the acquisition and the plan, all of which has been done or in the process of collecting the current survey. In fact, on January 26th, it was stated by staff member who reviewed the survey that the questions appeared to be appropriate and would provide a good sense of neighborhood's perspective on the proposal. So, our proposal was the Oakwood Knowles Property Owners Association has formally requested the village convey the right of way formerly known as Park Avenue to the association to develop, maintain, and preserve all residents within Oakwood Knowles subdivision. The Park Avenue right of way is essential to all residents of Oakwood Knowles as the only, it is, as it is the only access to OKPOA Park and Pier area. If the village board would agree to convey the said row, OKPOA would assume all future expenses and responsibility to maintain the property in accordance to the village standards. Park Avenue is a village right, is currently a village right of way located in the southwesterly corner of Cross Lake within Oakwood Knowles subdivision. Park Avenue right of way runs north and south, parallel to the OKPOA Park property and has provided access to all residents for over 64 years. Up until last year, the village has done very little to maintain the right of way and preserve it in its existence. We would like to relieve the village of that responsibility. Our proposed development is improve the drive with a CA6 gravel base, install a property barrier to protect the adjacent homeowners and their properties, add limited parking, including a designated handicap space down there to allow for our seniors, residents and handicap residents to fully access the park area. Upgrade current rental peers, add an additional kayak rack, install a blessing box for shared fishing equipment, life preservers, and other items to be used down in that area. We would like to add picnic tables for community enjoyment. We previously have submitted our proposed rendering, our plat of survey stamp, engineered plat of survey, the Lake County PIN mapping, rendering of the proposed plan, as well as a fully budgeted, a full budget for the pit, for the next three years. There's an example of the rendering that was provided to the board. I know most of you have already heard this over and over again, but I'd also like to read a message that goes back quite some time. And I'm going to quote this message. Oakwood Knowles Property Owners Association has been a presence in the neighborhood for a very long time, 64 years as a matter of fact, since 2021. OKPOA members have seen periods of highs and lows. During this time, OKPOA worked to make Oakwood Knowles a better place to live. The parades, parties, beach, boat ramp, and boat piers have been and continue to be a result of the members and the association's hard work and initiative. The children of Oakwood Knowles have grown up with memories of this family-oriented neighborhood no one can replace. Entering the new years, OKPOA is in desperate need. Failing to generate interest in new membership in the OKPOA will result in the demise of this organization, as well as property values will plummet. Each property owner will assume legal responsibility for common areas. Our subdivision will no longer be a safe, clean community to raise our children. Since Oakwood Knowles is on the northernmost section of Antioch and is one of the original subdivisions, we seem to have been forgotten by our government. First, we need to remember this is where we live, raise our families, and enjoy good times with extended family and friends. We want to keep our community safe and family-oriented. A place where we feel at home on any of the streets in the subdivision. We have, we have to wave hello to each other, stop and chat during our evening walks. That being said, one of the most important things pointed out years ago was that the boat launch area, the boat launch has been rendered virtually unusable for two reasons. The existing launch, silt in the lagoon as a result from Abbey Estates fencing. We need to find a different location for the boat launch. We need to become one as a community in order to be heard, that I believe that we're doing. It was also discussed in great detail about installing a boat launch at the pier and dock area. Over 20 years ago, this plan existed. The descriptive diagram is almost an identical replica rendering of what we have proposed just recently. That was both, that was put down by this current, some of the current administration. Said it can't be done, it doesn't make sense. Cost too money, too much money, how would we afford it? All, all of which is diagrammed here in this document. I could go on and on over the past, what has happened over the past 20 years and how we used to have support from all members, some of which are sitting on this board today. We have followed every, we have followed every request by this board. And we would like to be heard and we'd like to know how this board stands. We, I've talked to Administrator Kine. He, we, we put the, sorry, I'm getting a little mixed up. We conducted our survey, we're in the process of collecting right now. The survey would be collected on the, no later than the 12th or post-dated by the 12th. We have froze the mailing box, the PO box at the post office so that those surveys that do come back will be, the integrity will be preserved. Administrator Kine has offered to appoint somebody from the village to assist us in collecting those. On the 5th, after the 15th, we would like to have somebody with us to tabulate the surveys. We'd like to present that to the board on that same, that same week. And right now, we're formally requesting that there be a special meeting assigned prior to the committee in the whole in order so that we can understand and get a vote from the current administration on whether or not they support Oakwood Knowles and their decision or request for vacation of the right of way. This has gone on way too long in our opinion, and it's a simple request, I believe. That's all I have.
Thank you. Claudia Scovars, Lakewood, Antioch.
Good afternoon. I received a survey from Oakwood Knowles Association. I've lived on the lake for 50 years. The water condition at this time is, the water is good, the weeds are horrific. If anyone was on here that lives near or has been on Cross Lake in the last few years, it is totally weeds. I'm afraid at one point, if people are out there and they're skiing, whether it's our family or anyone else's family, if the weeds aren't maintained and taken care of, how are we going to add a boat launch for more boats to be on there? And I want to know, is it safe? I want to know, do they have a pier? The pier, is there an EPA permit for that? Or do they have to go through that, or do you have to show it before that is done? If it was passed and they're saying they're going to put a pier, additional pier on the lake, what are the boat rental fees going to be? How will they maintain that property? That's not property as I see it has been maintained and there are two volunteers, the volunteer that was doing part of the cleanup and cutting, cutting the grass has moved. One other person on the lake goes over there and they cut the grass. So is it going to be a group that's going to do it or occasionally going to get it done all the time? I would like to see a commitment, if it was done, that there is a group that is going to maintain that area. I'm not in favor of the village giving away property. It has always belonged to the village. And the one question that I have is, does Oakwood Knowles own the property under the water? That's a question that should be looked into. I own 200 feet in the water. I bought it probably 20 years ago, 20, 25 years ago. So I have the deed to my 200 acres. I love seeing, I don't care if someone walks in front of my property on the lake, it doesn't make a difference, they're fishing there all the time. I enjoy people waterskiing, doing every activity there is on that lake. But I think when the survey went out, the things that I'm saying right now were never addressed. When it came, we got a letter and we showed the diagram. But there were no questions on there is saying to us, how much this is going to cost? Do you have a permit? Are you going to maintain the weeds? The water in that area is like this, and if you walk into it, the muck will be up to your, my legs like this. From us, from years and years ago, when it was allowed, we had 200 yards of peystone in front of our house. All the fishermen coming up in front of our yard and fish. I love it. I love watching them fish and having a good time. But there are questions that have to be asked and answered, and the survey should consist of these questions. So people realize what the cost will be, realize what's going on that water, realize who's going to maintain it, if they want to maintain it after they hear and hear these suggestions and what they're going to make their commitment for. So at this time, I'm not in favor of the village giving their property away. I see that you have a kayak spa, a spot for kayak. I think that's a great idea to have some kayaks there. But the site, when it was talked about, under the bridge, when that went up and they dug it up and they put the boats and that was going to be the boat launch, silt is there all the time, and I see that. You could barely get a boat through there. At this present time in that area, you could barely get a boat through there. Does the EPA grant you permission to dig it out? Do they do something different? But until that is, those questions are answered and the people of Oakwood Knowles know this, not just, do you want this without knowing the cost? If it's legal, what you can do? So until those answers and that survey points out all these questions and what can be done on that property or not, I am not in favor at this time because we have not done a thorough job. We've, this job has been done to say this is what we're going to do, but not presenting the cost or the conditions of the lake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both. I don't think we're going to comment on it, anybody? Keep going? Okay. Okay, we have three items on the consent agenda. We have an approval of the February 8th, 2021 regular meeting minutes as presented. We also have consideration of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to negotiate and execute a marketing agreement with Altogether and the Clue Group, Resolution 2108. We heard that at the last call meeting. And number three, approval of the resolution authorizing the village administrator to educate a contract with Lauterbach and Hammond LLP for the purpose of providing auditing services to the village of Antioch, Resolution 21-10. All three of those items are on consent. If I could have a motion, if we all agree.
I would like to pull item two out.
Okay, I can pull item two and put it there as our first item under regular business. Is the board okay with that?
We're pulling item two out?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we all, we'll just be left with the minutes and the Lauterbach and Hammond, so I'll need a motion for those two items.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda containing items number one and items number three with the item number two pulled at the request of the trustee.
Okay, motion is made by trustee Pierce?
Second.
And seconded by trustee Peterson. I get used to that. Okay, any questions, trustee Pierce?
No, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No, Your Honor.
Trustee Domeniac?
No questions.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Clerk Kate Groll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five are voting yes, one is absent, the motion's carried. Okay, under regular business, we'll take item number two, consideration of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to negotiate and execute a marketing agreement with Altogether and the Clue Group, Resolution 21-08. Again, it was heard at our last call meeting. So if you'd like to put it as a motion to get it on the board for discussion, we'll accept that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by trustee Peterson, seconded by trustee Pierce. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
This is the group that, this is the Altogether group, the social media, correct?
They were here last week.
Correct. Yeah, I'm just refreshing. So we're spending $48,000 with the Lakota group. It was kind of unclear what, what the role and the overlap is between the two groups. When we, when it was discussed, what their role to what Lakota groups doing with Altogether.
So, if I, if I could address that, there's very little overlap between the two contracts for Lakota and Altogether. One is a, to develop a marketing strategy and the other one is to design hardscapes and landscapes in the downtown area and on the Pittman property. There's a similarity in them, both will utilize public input. Both, both of the contracts will have an element of soliciting ideas and input from the public. So there's going to be a similar task, but they're designed to do very different things. Think of the Lakota group as a landscape architect and Altogether is really helping us design a, a marketing strategy that we would use for social media and other avenues to basically, you know, present the village in the best possible light.
Right. I think with the Lakota group, when they start going, I think the best idea with this group maybe would be to bring this back. When the Lakota group starts with their process to maybe relook at this, in my opinion, because we're not sure what Lakota group's going to be doing to maybe see what they're going to do to bring this on board, since we did have a couple employees that did come over from the Lakota group to work with the Clue group. I couldn't, you know, until we know what Lakota group's doing to throw more money at the program, I think it's too soon to do this until Lakota group starts working, then bring this back, I think would be a better, in my thought process, be a better program. I would like to see this delayed until Lakota group starts putting stuff together and then see what Lakota group's doing. Then possibly looking at the Clue group. That's where I'm looking at this. I think this is too soon to bring this group on before we see exactly what Lakota group's doing. Let's see what the Lakota group are spending $48,000. See what the Lakota group does, then the Clue maybe come on and say, this is what we want this group to be that. That's just my opinion, so.
All right, thank you. Trustee Peterson?
Jim, I have a question. Now, this group that we're talking about is going to do marketing for the town. And coming up with a strategy so that when Michael goes out to businesses, wants them to come to Antioch, do economic development, bring in money for the village. This is what this company is going to help us do, correct?
It could be used for that. It could also be used in our messaging. So when we do campaigns, like participate and visit Lake County's holiday campaign or summer campaign, we'll have a toolbox with photographs, maybe it may be an altered logo somehow in messaging. And it's about messaging the community and selling the community correctly. So it's really not for one particular purpose, but it could also, it could help. You know, if we put the village, as I say, in a, in a good light or market the village well, it could promote economic development. It certainly can't hurt. You know, when a business is, if we market ourselves well, present ourselves to the market well, you know, that's going to resonate, I think, visitors, businesses coming, people that, you know, may want to shop or dine, as well as with the residents that live here already. So that's, it's, it's not just one thing that they're doing. It's really about our messaging, you know, on a granular level, to help us with, help our messaging strategies on social media, which has become very important, almost urgent.
Yes.
So, you know, that's, that's what they're really here to do is, is to make the village look attractive to the, any market, really.
Okay, and they did say that they would work with the Lakota group?
Absolutely, I don't see any reason, you know, as I say, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of crossover, but certainly, let's say the Lakota group were to, you know, design some improvements that we were to put in place. That may end up being some of the messaging, you know, we have a brand new parking lot or landscape or, you know, whatever. That may be something that would enter into the marketing realm. We may highlight an improvement that was designed by Lakota to attract people to come here or to highlight the improvement.
Right. Okay, well, thanks for answering my question. I, I really am in favor of them coming to the village and working. We don't want to waste any more time. I think the people of the village of Antioch want to see improvement and they want to see it now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Trustee Domeniac?
Yes, the reason that I wanted to have this pulled out of the consent agenda is because I have some similar concerns in regards to the timing for this. About a year ago, we started having discussions about downtown and marketing and had a plan put together to do some things to improve downtown. And we had the discussion that we should do a little bit of that homework before we start marketing so that we had an appealing downtown for people to come and visit. I'm certainly not questioning this firm in any stretch of the imagination. I've read the proposal, I think based on my experience that they are a good firm for doing this work. But I concur that I think the timing is off a little bit with what we're trying to do with the downtown beautification. And perhaps it's something that can be done in a parallel path, but I'm not quite sure what they're going to be marketing until we know a little bit more about what we're going to do with downtown and what those plans are. Having said that, I understand that you do have some needs and maybe there's a way to pair this back a little bit. The other thing I'm concerned about is this is the second time that we've had a presentation about a consultant where we're, we're already committing dollars next year and we haven't finalized our budget yet. And I just, although the amount of money isn't tremendous, I'm concerned about setting a precedent where we make decisions in one fiscal year and say, well, we're going to have the money in the next year's budget when we don't even know what that budget is going to be. Then the only other thing, and I'm really struggling about voting yes or no on this because I understand that you have some tactical needs, but the bigger picture I'm, I'm struggling with. The other thing is that my understanding that one of their recommendations was to look at our logo and I'm concerned that we would be spending taxpayer resources on redesigning the logo. We just spent money to put up directional signage. It just seems to me that we have a logo that works, we have a tagline that works, and I would just hope that staff would steer them away from. would just hope that staff would steer them away from starting all over on a logo and us having to pay for something to replace what is currently working and that we've invested a lot in, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Dominik, thank you. Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I think, I think all my fellow trustees here make good points, the timing might be a little bit off, so I concur with trustee Dominik and Mason. The one thing, though, I also agree with trustee Mary Peterson Haley is the fact that is, you know, I think we need to kind of get things started and to get them a little bit, if we don't vote for this and they're a little behind, they could get themselves a little bit of a head start, and, you know, we, Administrator Kim already said that the two could work kind of hand in hand, so it might make more sense for them to go ahead and get started, so I too see both points, a little bit of both. As far as the logo goes too, I would be, I like our logo and I think it works as well, I would like to know what would their reasons be as far as why they think we should change our logo or tagline, I do think it works, but I'm just curious on why they would even pursue that route.
Just, just to be clear on that, they like our logo and tagline too.
Okay.
If anything, it would be a font change, maybe, you know, it's ten years old, I mean, I call it the new logo, but sometimes I forget, it's been ten years since we, we developed it, so it was a minor tweak, it wasn't a new logo or new messaging or new branding, it would be, I like the logo, you like the logo, I think everybody, I haven't heard anything bad about the logo, but they simply mentioned, you know, maybe a, a new font on it or something, a slight tweak is really all it was, it wasn't starting from scratch or anything like that.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, that's all I have, your honor.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, mayor, can I make one comment?
Sure.
I'm going to make one suggestive comment moving forward, if we're going to use a, this, a group, moving forward, instead of using the word Pittman, I'm going to give three suggestions that we change our, our wordage moving forward, change the name of the property since they weren't a cooperative family when we bought it, Veterans Park, Central Park, Depot Park, get another name when we start describing in meetings. You know, that would be the first thing moving together to make it social media, to give it a different name than, than what we've been using, you know, start spicing it up for moving forward for the Clue Group. I would just like to see Lakota moving forward, so whatever name the constituents want to name that, we got to stop using the P word, because they weren't cooperative and, and when we went to negotiations, so, you know, I threw out three, Veterans Park, Central Park, Depot Park, Orchard Park, there's four, so we got to use, we got to, we got to start using a different name than the P word, so. Like I said, I would like to see this maybe timing Lakota do, you know, get the first base, then bring this on. Because I think we do need something, if people are, you know, Facebook noises, yeah, we want a potbelly, we want to make Antioch more attractive, we want our Facebook, and at Facebook, you know, we got to have rules with Facebook, we got to have Facebook policy, we got to have all that stuff in place prior to, to this, and I don't know if we have our policy put in place for Facebook, to have our Facebook policy out there for this group to go running on board, so. That's one consideration, maybe we're, maybe a month, two months ahead of schedule on this.
Thank you. Trustee Mason, trustee Pierce?
Ah, yes, thank you for recognizing me for the second time, your honor. First of all, I agree with trustee Mason, we need to come up with another name, whether it's Veterans Park or Depot Park, or maybe Memorial Park for everybody who's passed away from COVID, or, or veterans who have passed away, something, something different than Pittman, so I agree with trustee Mason on that. I, I do differ with probably, it sounds like the majority of the board, I, I think the people of, of Antioch want us moving forward, the Clue Group is on the line here, so maybe at some point they'll want to say something to, to answer some of the questions, but, you know, for, the pandemic started in March of last year, actually before March of last year, but that's when everything shut down, our businesses for a year now have suffered, and we've been struggling for a year to get a message out there and how we're going to message our village and how we're going to present our village and how we're going to sell our village and how we're going to help our businesses, and we're, we're not getting anywhere, and, and I think more is expected of us than that, and we, we had, we've had people talking about marketing for quite a while now, and we finally find a, a group that's a good, solid group that has a lot of experience to do marketing type stuff for the village, and I, and I think we need to start moving forward, if it needs to be adjusted, we can adjust it, but to sit here and go, well, let's just wait till later, we do a lot of wait until just later, I, I don't think that's appropriate at this point, I think we need to help our town, we have to image our town and talk about our town, towns like up in Sturgeon Bay, they've been selling themselves for fifty years, I think ten years ago I brought up Sturgeon Bay, maybe trustee Peterson remembers this conversation, when I talked about Sturgeon Bay and how they've marketed themselves and started off as a small little cherry, cherry place, and they've sold themselves and sold themselves and sold themselves, and it's ten years later and we're still not selling ourselves, I'd like to start selling Antioch, so I think we need to move forward and, and let them tweak us as we go along, if we don't like what they're doing with their discussions with the Clue Group, or if they bring up a refresh, because they, they said refreshing the logo, not replacing the logo when they were here last time, I, I think that we, we say we don't like that refreshment, we have that opportunity and that option, but I don't think we have the option to just wait until later when we feel that something's more comfortable for us, because this whole year hasn't been comfortable for anybody, especially our businesses and our town, that's all I have to say.
Thank you trustee Pierce, and yes, the group is on the, on the call here, so if we have any questions, I happen to agree with both sides, I, I really do, but I definitely agree with the fact that we can't stop, we need to move forward, we do have the control, we have Michael Garrigan, who is our Economic Development Director, who will be in charge of this group when, when it does come, so I think we can put a playlist together, what we want, not what they want, and with Jim being there as kind of the coordinator with Michael, I think we need to push forward, I mean, we have some great groups out there, we have the Economic Development Task Force that can work closely with, with this group to guide them and, and help the businesses that have been really active and trying to do exactly what they are doing here, so hopefully mirroring some things together, so yes, waiting isn't the answer, I think both of these groups can work hand in hand, one for the project as far as the nuts and bolts, and the other one to kind of bring us through the, the imagery of what we're going to do, and that's really the, one's marketing and one is actually hardscapes, again, we have to do it this way, because now's the time to, and I think having Michael being the conductor in this whole thing could actually guide both of these groups in the, in the right path, so I think if we wait any longer, I think we're just going to disappoint the, the struggling businesses that have been looking for our leadership, looking for us to take charge of the future, and I think if I had the vote, I would probably vote in favor.
Mayor? My comment was not to sit and wait, my comment is to make both parties work yesterday.
Okay, that's exactly what I just said.
Yeah, it's exactly, I'm, I'm tailing on to what you said, it's just we voted Lakota, and I would just like to see one group start working, so this other group has something to tag on to, so.
Well, Lakota started about two and a half weeks ago.
I, I understand that, I just would like to see everybody start working, so we get everybody off the ground.
Okay.
With like racehorses.
Okay, that's why we have a, a good staff, we have a great staff, like Michael, who's got a lot of knowledge in this, he just does not have eight hours a day to devote to this, that's why we do hire some consultants from time to time to help work with us, so again, it's on the floor, we do have a motion in a second, but I'd like to hear from the group here, to Altogether and Clue Group, to see if they could just really quickly, you heard everybody on the board make comments, so if you can reiterate anything that they've talked about to, to reassure what you're all about, so we can move forward and hopefully in a positive manner.
Sure, yeah, thank you first of all so much for considering our contract, we're excited to hopefully work with you all, you know, regarding timing and us, our plan, the communications plan and the downtown beautification plan, you know, as Administrator Kim said, they're really separate projects, I mean, they're both advancing the goal of moving Antioch forward, but we are starting with, you know, what is the story of this place, how are you currently communicating that story, what, what are your assets, what are your challenges, and then how do we design to, to course correct and set a strategy for the future, and so we'll certainly be working with the Clue Group where it's appropriate in terms of, you know, what improvements that, you know, the community sees and that they see appropriate for the downtown as part of something that you should message, but, you know, our conversation starts with really also talking to the community about, you know, what is it like to live here, why do you love Antioch, and how do we need to be telling that story better so that other people, you know, want to come here, and the people who do love Antioch are using the same story to, to, you know, communicate that and become brand ambassadors, so I don't think that the overlap is a bad thing, I think it's a good thing to have us both be like making momentum on the same goal at the same time, and as was mentioned, you know, we work closely with the Clue Group and have contacts there and, you know, don't see any problem on, you know, having both of these happen at the same time. Marissa, do you have anything you want to add on?
Yeah, I want to add on, I know that downtown Antioch is, is the heart of Antioch, and I think that you all are investing in it and, and in a very smart way, the Clue Group was, was wonderful. I also think that Antioch is more than its downtown, you have your recreational amenities, you have different businesses, you have the families, you, you have Metro, which I know is downtown, but that's just an asset in and of itself, and so we want to celebrate all of that, and definitely downtown is a piece of that, and I think to, you know, trustee Johnson and trustee Pierce's thoughts of, the timing is now, you have other villages, other municipalities who are working on this, and you're going to have a very captive audience as we get out of COVID and people are looking to, to travel a little bit more to, to get outside of their own villages and their own communities and explore, and you want to be well positioned with a strong narrative and identified kind of buckets of advertising and, and marketing, and make sure you're very strategic in thinking about how you get all these different target groups, what's the story you're telling them, and how you can be very competitive on a regional scale, and so with that being said, I think that, you know, to your point of starting yesterday is smart, to get ahead of this, and we will collaborate with Lakota, and I think that, you know, now is the time to start all of this, and, and we will work together, and we can also start thinking about how do we tell the story of you all investing in your downtown and improving your downtown, because there's something there as well. I'm open to any other questions that you may have for us.
I don't think so. Anything from staff, Michael, Jim?
It's the board's pleasure is what they're going to do with this, you know, we're, we're here to, you know, we were directed to do, go through this process and help a marketing firm, so here we are.
All right, great, we do have a motion in a second, so I will have the clerk entertain it.
Can she reread the motion, please?
Well, I believe trustee Peterson, the motion was to put it on the floor, the motion to approve the resolution?
Yes.
And trustee Pierce, is that your second to approve?
That would be my second, yes.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to approve the resolution as presented. Okay, trustee Pierce?
Aye.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Trustee Dominik?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, we have five voting yes, one is absent, this motion's carried, thank you. Okay, consideration to ratify the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff. Would like to do that. I tried to pull up the dollar amount on my screen.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of two hundred, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Okay, trustee Dominik made the motion to approve for two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine, fifty-four, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It was seconded by trustee Pierce, any questions trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominik?
None.
Trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, clerk take roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, five voting yes, one is absent, this motion's carried. Consider a payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff.
Move to approve accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, the motion by trustee Dominik was to approve for one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven, fifty-eight, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it was seconded by trustee Johnson, any questions trustee Pierce?
No, um, out of that hundred and seventy, I guess the answer is that it's more of a statement, out of that hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eighty-three thousand is, our invoice is over ten thousand, there's Core and Main LP, Daniels, Long and Pinzel, Illinois Public Risk, Lakeside International, Morton Salt and Lex Banks, are we done with Morton Salt?
Most likely, no, most likely not, we're, we're likely to receive another invoice.
Okay.
I think we are, we are within budget on our usage of salt, even though we had kind of a tough winter, I did get the information that we are still within our allotment of what we've ordered, so we're doing good with salt.
That's it, your honor.
Okay, thank you.
No questions, your honor.
Okay, trustee Peterson?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominik?
No questions.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one is absent, this motion's carried. Consideration of, of an emergency order ratified in the mayoral declaration of emergency relating to Corona, coronavirus ordinance number twenty-one dash oh three dash oh four. The motion is seconded.
Don't move.
Is that waving the second reading?
Waving the second reading, I'm sorry.
Yes, motion by trustee Mason, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, seconded by trustee Peterson, any questions trustee Pierce?
The only question I have with the emergency order is just, the federal government just is approving the one point nine billion, million?
Trillion.
Trillion, yeah, trillion, I'm sorry, I can't even conceive the number that high. COVID relief act, have we got any indication of what this, Antioch will get out of that?
One point seven five is what we're listed on in, in the spreadsheet that was distributed, but we really don't know if it's up to that amount, if we have to qualify for that amount, or if they're just going to mail us a check, you know, there's no detail as to what that money is for, but we are listed for one point seven five.
I think, your honor, it's something, once we get that money allocated, one point seven five million dollars, if that's what we get from the federal government for COVID relief, that that may be something that would require a special meeting to discuss how we're going to use that money if staff needs help coming up with plans, because I think there's a lot of uses that are out there that are required and some that would be helpful to the community.
I concur with you a hundred percent trustee Pierce, and hopefully we get it, we have that problem, so hopefully it's a problem force there, thank you for bringing that up. Trustee Mason?
None, none, none over here.
Trustee Peterson?
No.
Trustee Dominik?
No.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one absent, this motion's carried. Consideration orders approving issuance of a class J E Y O B license to Crystal Nails at Spa of Antioch P L L C, that's order number twenty-one dash oh three dash oh five, that was also heard at our last call meeting.
Move to approve, waiting second reading.
Okay, that's a motion by trustee Dominik, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Peterson, any questions trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominik?
No questions.
No questions.
Trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes. One's absent. This motion is carried. Consideration of ordinance approving issuance of a class J BYOB license for drive time indoor golf LLC, ordinance number twenty one dash oh three dash oh six. Also heard at our last call meeting.
Oh, more. Second.
Yes, wait in the second reading. I got to make sure I get golf with. I need it.
Okay, that was.
I need a third of that to get them all of you.
Yeah, I need a, it's a breakfast ball. It's called a breakfast ball.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Mason. Seconded by trustee Johnson. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominia?
No questions.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, roll call, please.
Here?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes. One is absent. This motion is carried. Okay, approval of a resolution authorizing a closure of Route eighty three Main Street for the annual Fourth of July parade, Sunday, July fourth at ten thirty AM, resolution.
The Easter parade.
Our first, okay, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself here, I'm sorry. If everything's the same, but the closure of Route eighty three Main Street for the annual Easter, parade on Saturday, April third, twenty twenty one, at ten thirty AM. That's resolution twenty one dash eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by trustee Pierce to approve. Do I have a second? And that's seconded by trustee Dominiac. Okay, Jimmy, you got any comments?
I do. Normally, this would be a mundane kind of a thing to apply for a, you know, a resolution to IDOT to close eighty three for a parade, except, it's not. It's, we're still in a pandemic. This, this would be our first attempt to, you know, to have a parade. I just want the board to be cognizant that, if you vote to approve this resolution, staff will move forward and have the Easter parade. We do have plans to try to promote it as a socially distance and mask event. Slightly smaller. But unfortunately, we have some experience, at least staff and some of you have some experience with Easter parades and the community's affinity, for Easter parades. You know, I think that you at least, you know, should go into it wide, eyes wide open, but you potentially could get criticized either way. But staff, you know, is prepared to proceed with an Easter parade, we think in accordance with the governor's orders. Outdoor activities are allowed. We don't see any special provision in the phased reopening plan that would prohibit this. But I think it needs to be done in a responsible, safe manner. The event is not as large as a Fourth of July parade. It's smaller. You know, mainly attracts families. But I just, I just wanted to mention that, you know. Unfortunately, you're putting a kind of a tough position to say yes or no to this. But staff will interpret your vote here as either proceed or don't proceed with an Easter parade.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Trustee Pierce?
I, think if the governor, if we're opening, if we're opening up Wrigley Field and stocks, the Sox guaranteed field for our opening day, which is very important to this state. I also think maybe an Easter parade and celebrating somebody rising up and stuff like that, is just as important to our community. So I would be in favor of it. I would want to make sure our staff does work on, getting that message out that this should be safe. Mask should be worn, even though we're outside. Families should stay together, stuff like that. Maybe stretch out the parade a little bit if possible, so that people can have a little bit more room. But, I think we're moving into a part of our life where we can start doing some things that, bring mental stability and mental health back into our community. And so I would be in favor of it.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Trustee Mason?
I think this goes with Easter is freedom of religion. People make choices. If they want to come, they'll come. But this is under the freedom of religion. Antiochism in the Bible. I think we should go ahead with the parade. There's still a phobia out there, but the phobia is, you know, people don't want to come down. They don't want to come down. Hopefully, people make the decision to wear masks, even though it's outside. But I think, Easter's, Easter's always been important to me. Good Friday's been important to me. I think it needs to, Easter parade needed.
Thank you, trustee Peterson. Anything comment? Okay.
I just, I want to say I'm in favor of it as well. I think it's time, as long as it's done, properly and safely. And I don't think that there's any problem with doing that. Especially with the governor saying that outdoor activities are all right. So I'm in favor of it. I think it's time.
Thank you, trustee Peterson. Trustee Dominia?
I concur with trustee Peterson. It's time for us to have some fun here in town.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I do agree with everyone else. It is definitely time if the residents want this as well.
And I concur with the whole entire board that I think we've been locked or cooped up for a year now. I think the public has learned very well how to act appropriately in this type of situation. And I think, we've earned this position to be able to be responsible. So again, having staff come up with some good guidelines and people being, socially correct and being responsible of themselves. If people want to stay in, they can stay in. We're not forcing anyone to come out. But I do think it's time, like everybody else said, it's time we smell the fresh air. I think we've been cooped up in our houses for too long. So that's what I have to say. And I'll have the clerk take roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five are voting yes. One is absent. This motion is carried. Okay, approval of the resolution authorized the closure of Route eighty three Main Street for the annual Fourth of July parade on, Sunday, July fourth, twenty twenty one, at ten thirty AM. That's resolution twenty one dash twelve. The motion is second.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Pierce.
Second.
And seconded by trustee Johnson. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No, I think it's the same discussion we had a few minutes ago. About, I think you're right, Your Honor. It's time for people to, start getting out. And I have a lot of faith in Antioch that they do things, they know how to do things appropriately. They've proven it over the last year.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
No, no comment.
Okay, trustee Peterson?
Yeah, I do have a comment on this parade. The Fourth of July parade, there's substantially more people coming into Antioch for that. And because of that, I think the village can be proactive in spreading the parade out from, Antioch High School all the way down to North Avenue and giving people, a place to spread out and enjoy the parade. It's happening, almost happening as long. And that way, the parade itself can end at North Avenue, circle back on Anita and go to the high school from there. We've done this. We did it for the Diamond Jubilee when Antioch was seventy five years old. And we did it for, the hundredth birthday of Antioch. And it worked out beautifully. So with COVID, it's a good way to spread everybody out and be safer. When we know people are going to be coming to town for Fourth of July parade. So I think those are my comments.
Thank you for those. Uh, trustee Dominia?
I really liked trustee Peterson's suggestion because I do have concerns about the volume of people that we have at this. And it's a much longer parade, like an hour and a half. It's a lot more opportunity to spread stuff. But I really like that idea. If we can lengthen it, people spread out. There's still going to be some congestion, but not as badly. So I don't know. Yeah, I think that's a really great idea. And I would support having the parade. My assumption is, is that, I know Easter is a couple weeks away, but, we will make a final decision on the parade, maybe a little bit later for Fourth of July. But yeah, I, I, at this point, like that idea. If we can pull that off, I would be supportive. Thank you.
Staff has begun discussions about that very thing, to lengthen and change the trade route. So I don't think we're logistically there yet, but we're working on something. And you will have an opportunity, you know, say yes or no, based on what we come up with.
And hopefully, there's nothing that's going to shut us down.
Okay, trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I'm happy to hear that staff is working on that. I think it was a great idea by trustee Peterson. I think the business is down that way. They've been asking us to do that for a while. I think they'll appreciate it as well, residents that live, north of Maine, going north on Main Street. So great job.
Okay.
Mayor, can I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Can we get on our Facebook page, maybe put something out for people that aren't aware of the signup for All Vax? So maybe this will be a moot point if we can get our residents of Antioch to get vaccinated. And we put the push, to get people vaccinated, since there's going to be three vaccines coming out. And maybe this all would be a moot point if we get the word out to get vaccinated. We start pushing people because maybe people aren't aware of the Lake County website, All Vax, to get signed up, get the email in, get on the list.
Jimmy, have you worked on that? I know you've been in communications.
Yeah, we, we have all that information on our webpage.
We've actually done a Facebook post already regarding the All Vax program, so we can, we can post that again.
Yeah. The more times you get it out, the more times people might miss it, so.
We are just starting, clinic are just started today, right?
Yeah.
They started.
We did get a message that they, they did. I don't know how many vaccines they were able to schedule. It's not, you know, something you can just drive up to. You have to schedule with them. There was a trickle of folks coming in there. I'd estimate maybe, maybe there was.
They had two hundred today. Two hundred.
Yeah, you know, I checked down it a few times and it was just a, you know, a car coming every once in a while. But, I, I know that the struggle at the county level has been how to get the vaccine. They have, last, last I heard, you know, almost two hundred thousand people or over two hundred thousand people registered on All Vax. But they're only getting, you know, a thousand doses a week, you know, to distribute. So I think it's a good idea that we, you know, get people to register, absolutely.
I think the more people get registered, the more allotment we get. If there's, other communities stealing, if you say this has been politicized and they're taking up, you know, some allotments away. And the more of our Antioch community gets on the list, and it shows we may have fifteen thousand people on the list, and they might push more vaccines our way. Just a thought process.
Well, nationally, there's thirty million people have been vaccinated. They announced that. That's nine percent of the United States population. And Lake County has about seven hundred and fifty thousand people. And according to the, the health department, they vaccinated almost one hundred and forty five thousand. So we're actually well ahead of the curve. We're up to the twenty percent range, but, you know, so it's not, I don't think it's because they haven't made efforts. I do think that there have been logistical problems and it's something that's going to take a while to come out.
Well, our good buddy, the mayor of Waukegan took a big chunk of it. And we've got another county board member took a big chunk of it. It's just, they're not coming this way.
Well, we can't point fingers at this.
No, I'm not pointing fingers. They're, they're just, I mean, they're using, they're using, they got more power of people. That's, that's just the logistics of it.
And I think trustee Mason may have a point about, we need to get the information out better. The second most popular phone call I had today was what is going on with the Chase Bank? Yeah, I, I had people calling me. I saw a sign on the road. What's going on with Chase Bank? Can I get my vaccine there? You know, I, I know people are signing into the All Vax and they're not in the right category. We're not getting the right thing. But I think, we could do a little bit better promoting what is actually happening locally for the vaccines and how to direct people. I think trustee Mason may have a little bit of a point there. All kudos to him. I think currently, the one on the old Chase building, according, when I was there, they hand you a card, you're supposed to call, the Wakanda office to make an appointment. So that's all we, so far is what I've gotten out of it. I know, Jim, you've been in communication the best.
Yeah, that's about, that's about all I get to.
Right.
You know, they're, they're asking for more vaccine. I know that. They have, it's true, limited, you know, availability to vaccine. I think they'd like to do more people locally here. I think it'd be a good thing to get the local site, a local pod. So I'll do everything I can. And certainly, certainly, it's not a bad idea to publicize.
Well, they're trying to get hooked in with All Vax right now. They did talk to Jason. They're trying to get hooked in with All Vax. It's the problem. It's been politicized because you've got, like I said, you get the logistics of other towns with their population, taking the vaccine. You've got other county board members bragging on their Facebook page that they've taken care of their people. So it's just, it's been so politicized with other people. I've taken care of my people. And we just have to get our, everybody in our town signed up for All Vax. So we, we look like, hey, we've got the population base of, you know, between township, we get Supervisor Shaughnessy on board. We get, we'd have thirty thousand people signed up. Maybe we can get more, you know, shot our way.
Easy enough to do.
Okay. Brings us back to the, I believe, the, the motion.
The parade.
The parade motion, yes. Did the clerk take roll?
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, five voting yes. One absent. This motion is carried. Okay, got a consideration to direct the votes attorney to draft a resolution for a business incentive grant for fire guys tipping in the amount of sixty nine hundred. It's Mr. Olson, Joe Olson. Michael, have you?
Yes, thank you. Pursuit to our business incentive grant program, which was established several years ago, the applicant, Mr. Olson, which is, fire, fire tinting, fire guy tipping, is requesting a business incentive grant amount. The proposal is for a construction or installation of a canopy. This business is on Route eighty three, South of one seventy three, was approved, by the board several years ago. The applicant is requesting approximately a sixty, six thousand nine hundred dollar grant, which will be approximately half of the proposal. I think you can, you're packing a copy of the proposal canopy. It would be a steel metal canopy, which would be installed on the front facade facing Route eighty three. Pursuit to our program, staff does provide an analysis. We have a scoring process based on our analysis. It's based on a defined criteria, which I'm outlining my staff report. We, based on our criteria, we gave the applicant a score of thirteen. There is a maximum score of thirty six. Each criteria is based on one to six, with six being the maximum. While we acknowledge that this proposed canopy would generally improve the overall aesthetics, we did lower our criteria. Score was somewhat lower based on the potential economic, impact and the potential for generating sales cap. So in sum and substance, we are looking for, if the board does support this, proposed business incentive grant, it would be appropriate motion to direct the votes attorney to draft the motion, I'm sorry, to draft an ordinance approving the amount of six thousand nine hundred dollars. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Right, do we have a motion in a second on the floor? And ask for a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion and bring it on the floor.
Okay, trustee Pierce made the motion to get it on the floor. Do I have a second to get it on the floor?
Second.
Trustee Peterson's got the second. Any questions, trustee Pierce, of either Michael or the applicant?
My question's to Michael. You, I'm going back to your score of thirteen. That's like almost one third of what, your maximum score is. So I'm, I'm struggling with the benefit.
So I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the benefit of this one. I, I mean, I, I'd like to help all our businesses, I really do. But if we're comparing this one business to another one that scores thirty-five, maybe you can help justify what this does economically for the, for the, for the, for the business owner and for the village.
Well, staff, based on staff analysis, the only thing that we really, with regard to the score, the only thing where the applicant really scored higher was the visibility, obviously, faces Route eighty-three. It has high visibility in three, but as it relates to the other criteria, impact improving the physical appearance of the building would be limited. I mean, the applicant did work with us, it's a quality building, it's all fiber cement board. I think the applicant's very happy with the overall appearance. Mr. Olson's actually here, give him any questions. But overall, staff did not score the impact on the actual physical appearance. Nor, more importantly, as we know, this program was created to try to help businesses. We have to look at the impact it would have on generating sales tax, i.e. what would be additional benefit would be in providing incentive in, as it relates to generating additional sales tax, the economic development impact and advantage. Obviously, this would be a very, very limited impact, so that score was scored quite low. So again, in summary, we, we're not, while we're not making recommendations nile per se, I think the score itself speaks for itself. It's a relatively low score, this is the way the criteria was established and approved by the village board. So I think the score itself, obviously substantially below the maximum score.
And, but it is a fairly new building that did a good job of building it. And we required them to do a lot of things that they didn't have to do, if I remember correctly, along the, the south side of the building, and, and to change the appearance of the building, to make it more, more in line with what our, our, our corridor plan was, compared to what they could have done just based upon zoning.
Right, the biggest impact, the cost, was the fiber cement board, which is, you know, obviously a more expensive building. I think originally, when I had the original discussion with Mr. Olson, he was hoping to do a metal building. Our ordinance does not permit that. So he upgraded the overall sheathing of the building, it's up to a fiber cement board, which is obviously substantially more expensive than either vinyl or, or metal. And that did add cost, so there's, I acknowledge that. Mr. Olson is, again, constructed a quality building. I know he said, received a lot of positive feedback about the quality of the building. And these canopies may, may very well help the overall appearance of the building. But based on the criteria this board approved as part of this incentive program, this is staff's score. Obviously, you're prerogative to differ from staff's analysis, but this is the score that we came up with.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan.
Okay, Trustee Mason.
This, this question is nothing relevant, but kind of relevant. Do you remember what the score he gave for the new medical building, the old Chase Bank?
It was below, I don't, I, I honestly don't remember.
The only reason I ask, because I was over there today, talking to him, watching him put the brick up and everything else. And, and, you know, they're putting in an elevator that costs, you know, two hundred some thousand dollars for the elevator. We denied that program. That's a facility that helps the senior, right now, it's putting shots, shots in arms. You know, I kind of would like to see that brought back for reconsideration, because that's helping our seniors, that's helping, you know, getting the main objective to our Fourth of July parade, get everybody in town vaccinated. There is not another doctor's office vaccinating. I understand, you know, just like your signed ordinance, there's an exception made for every rule. This board turned that one down, I was fighting for that one hard, because I knew that vaccination site was common. You know, when you, when you look at, we made this building do a lot more as construction with the cement board. You know, I know with the fencing at Starbucks and everything else, we put, and with the storm sewer and everything else, we put them through a lot of extra work with the fencing and, and, and whatnot. So, you know, the cost to put the building up is not cheap. I sure would like to see, you know, the shots and arms be brought up. I can't approve this one, the score thirteen out of thirty, but sure like to see, you know, that Chase Bank brought up for reconsideration for the people that voted no, because I think helped our seniors on a building that makes more sense to see the elevator in operation, because they're gonna have, you know, you know, a lot of people doing medical records in that basement to be shop. That's not been, you know, consideration, that was gonna go to lunch and shop in town. They have a full, full operation going down there. And I don't think that's taking into these scores, how many heads are working in that building? How many people are drawn to that building on a daily basis? You know, I, I took a tour through the building, and it's an impressive building, with how many rooms they got in there. And I think that building should be relooked at.
Trustee Mason.
Go ahead.
I just don't want to cut you off, but we are on a motion.
I, I understand you're on a motion, but.
About Mr. Olson's building and.
I understand.
Really appreciate the Chase building being a beautiful building inside. We can bring that up at a different time, please. But we have Mr. Olson on the line right here, asking about his property. Trustee Peterson.
Well, my feeling on, is this, it's, that's, this building sits on the Route eighty-three corridor coming into town. And it's not the prettiest corridor coming into town. But I like the fact that he put the money into this building, and now he wants help putting the awnings on there. It's only going to improve it. We might not get the sales tax from it, but it's an improvement on a, on a kind of a, a sad-looking corridor going, coming in. And I'm thrilled that one of those buildings is, is trying to improve itself, and I'm all there to help them out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Dominique.
I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to manage, obviously, the taxpayer money. And we spent time, Michael spent an incredible amount of time surveying other communities. We came up with a ranking system, and I think we should use the ranking system. And while I appreciate that it's a great-looking building, I understand that. The criteria that we all agree to, obviously with the exception of Trustee Peterson, we agree to as a means to measure whether or not we should give these grants out. And I think that, based on this score, while it is a nice building, and certainly that additional canopy would look nice as well. I can't support, because I believe in the criteria and the ranking, and trust the judgment of the staff, that this is not the best use of taxpayer money.
Trustee Johnson.
Um, I, I agree with Trustee Peterson. I, you know, just looking at the criteria, and I know as part of evaluating the criteria, but since then, I think there's another factor that we don't look at. The more we beautify key areas, and I know that's number three, and it's rated as a four, the more we beautify property that we have, business-wise and so forth, what that does is increase values of surrounding properties, which then increases, increases home sale values. And I think the more we reap those benefits, that's going to drive, again, which is, I know another factor, businesses in the town. So I think the more we keep improving main buildings that are somewhat of an eyesore, again, I think all the surrounding property benefits, and that not necessarily in the score. So I think this is something that we need to look at. I am leaning towards supporting this.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Johnson. My only comment would be, my position is, I would probably challenge the first one. The economic impact on bill sales or property tax revenue. The way I see that building, I see a retail store there. I'm assuming that when you sell tile, and you sell carpets, and you sell all these goods, that does generate sales tax. I'm assuming the fire guys' window tinning also has a lot of products in there that we might not even be aware of. They do a lot of the product would be advertising with plastic, weather tech products. I know I bought some things myself there, so I would think those would generate sales tax. So I think I would challenge that. I don't know how we came up with the, the increase or decrease, or whatever criteria we used. But again, I'm looking at that building, and I'm looking at it being a flat, plain building. I think these awnings would give it some dimension, it might even attract people to it even more so. Because you do drive by into this kind of nice-looking building, of course. But I think it's kind of one-dimensional with a couple signs. I think by putting some beautiful awnings on it, could actually attract people, drive in there, maybe boost the sales up a little bit. Like, I would bet if we asked the gentleman in the carpet tile store, I bet you, he could probably tell us it might help him also. So, I know we have a point system, but I would lean toward helping out.
Does this point system, Mike, could this point system not include that other business in there?
Yeah, I mean, obviously it did, it obviously acknowledged that, you know, obviously that business is up and running. And the question is, what, you know, what will the additional incorporation of a canopy, what will add in general sales? I think, I don't think it increases the visibility of the building that, that much. But again, the criteria is really a starting point for discussion. As I started the discussion, it's obviously board's prerogative, either concur with staff's points or debate the differ. So I've heard different perspectives here this evening, so it's your prerogative to concur with staff's scoring or not.
But you give, you give sales, sales tax to two, and that's a total of five, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
But did you take the other store and then?
The question is, what will the proposed incentive, i.e. the financing or subsidizing the installation of these two canopies that you have in your package? What will the impact on additional, increasing additional sales tax? I.e., will the proposed architectural addition increase the visibility of this building, which would substantially increase sales taxes? I think staff's perspective, I think I'm still, I think it's quite limited with regards to, you know, the impact it would have on generating more revenue for that retailer. And that's great, I mean, that, that retailer relocated from our downtown to that dislocation, and, you know, we were very happy to see that. They have a much bigger store, I think it's working quite well for them, it's all very positive. But the question is, what will this proposed canopy have as it relates to additional revenue sales tax? Which we can discuss that or argue that, but that's, that's the question, that's part of the criteria.
Your Honor.
But yes, the question I asked is, are you taking both businesses in aspect where the canopy would help both businesses?
Yes, I, yes, I did.
So just for clarity, I want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. What you're saying is that putting these canopies on to raise this number would mean that there would be an increased number of people going, wow, look at that store, it's got canopies, let's go in there. Versus, I'm not gonna go in that store because there's no canopy.
I think that was the way we created the criteria.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so thank you.
That could be argued at any business. Your Honor. Yes. Um, you know, as indicated earlier, I'm, I'm really torn on this, but as I'm sitting here listening to everybody talk, I can't help but think of the Scarpelli Auto Body Shop that we did give a grant to. And now, when I drive by it, I say, look how much sharper that looks, look how that helped that area. Look how, you know, when people go by there, they, they, they don't look at it like they used to. And, and maybe redoing a whole outside of a building is a little bit more than putting an awning on there. But maybe, in its own way, putting these, these awnings on there helps that area, and helps improve the buildings, the people around it, they, oh, this is getting better here, maybe we need to invest some money here, maybe we need to do stuff. So I, I, I think at this point, I could, could justify the, look.
Okay, anybody else have a second round? I don't, I guess the clerk.
Dominique?
Yes, I'll, your motion now. Need a separate motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the business grant for, for the fire guys' window tinning building in the amount of approximately sixty-nine hundred dollars in waiving the second reading.
This is a resolution, draft a resolution.
I'll draft a resolution.
Yeah.
Right, the, the recommended motion is to direct the attorney to draft a resolution approving the grant.
Yes, thank you.
Would that be your motion?
That would be my motion tonight, thank you.
Second.
The motion by Trustee Pierce, second by Trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominique?
No.
Johnson?
Hi. Okay, we got four voting yes, one voting no, one absent, motion is carried. Consideration of an ordinance granting R-three zoning of property known as Fox Parcel located on Amuda Avenue, T Z B twenty-one dash oh one R Z, ordinance number twenty-one dash oh three dash oh seven, that's Craig Fox.
Okay, yes, thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before you this evening for a request to rezonate the property. This property was inadvertently rezoned on the open space in two thousand and eleven as part of the zoning map amendment. The village unfortunately rezoned this property as open space. The, the owner of the property bought the property originally for manufacturing. He bought it, he's been paying taxes since that. He's contacted us, contacted staff several months ago. And we had a discussion, and we thought it'd be appropriate to bring this matter back for a rezoning to allow him to use the property, and due to the fact he's been paying property taxes on it. Based on our discussions with the owner, he did request that it be rezoned to R-three, a multifamily. And that's based on the current usage around the property. There is a contact map in your zoning packet, which shows you the property surrounded by multifamily on three sides, there's multifamily across the street, several small apartment buildings. There is a small townhome project across the street. There is a small industrial building adjacent to this property. And to the, to the east, there's a village-owned property, actually, the creek goes to there, which is actually wetland, that is actually unbuildable. But this property is in fact buildable. So the applicant did request a rezoning to R-three. And that would allow, you had questions, what would that allow? That would probably, just because of the size of the property, that would allow a small, a construction of maybe one, one small multifamily building, or maybe a couple townhomes. So it's not a very big property, so by definition, very limited what, what it could be used for. So we're not going to be seeing a large multifamily project here. And, and again, at the maximum, we see a small project, which would be consistent with existing character. So again, we're seeking, the applicant is seeking approval of rezoning the property from open space, which, again, is non-buildable. The property really has no value, this current zoning. So staff did recommend, planning commission did also recommend that we, we support the requested rezoning. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, first and foremost, I'd like to see if somebody would like to entertain a motion and get it on the floor.
Move to approve an ordinance granting R-three zoning to the property known as Fox Parcel located on Amuda Avenue. Waiting the second reading.
Okay, there's a motion by Trustee Dominique, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Pierce, and any questions, Trustee Pierce?
Are we gonna require him to build like a little tunnel for the bike path that's been there for like forty, hundred years?
I have gone across it.
You know, I don't have any other questions. This, I know it's everybody's favorite bike path, but at the same time, it's the right thing to do for that property.
Okay, Trustee Mason.
I don't have any questions, I didn't get a map, so, but there's no map in the back.
It's on the zoning, it's at the end of the packet.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions.
Trustee Dominique.
I don't have any questions, but just for anyone who's listening in for the record, because there were people that were concerned about this piece of property being developed. I think it's important for people to understand that this is just rezoning. It's not approving any kind of building, any kind of development. Anybody that wanted to develop that property would have to go through all the channels.
Exactly, there'll be a site plan review process, so anything that's being proposed will come back to the board. Exactly. There'll be a site plan review process. So anything that's being proposed will come back to the board. For floor review. So if there's any issues as rights, what they're proposing, the board will have another opportunity to, um, to review it.
Right, thank you.
And trustee Johnson. Yeah, I don't have any questions. Hey, roll call please.
Here.
Hi.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Hi. Five voting yes, one absent. Motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution approving small business grants, resolution twenty-one dash thirteen. Michael?
Yes, thank you, your honor. Um. This matter is coming before the board. As you know, a number of months ago, the village board, um, made it quite clear that they wanted to help the small business community on Antioch and, um. Um, based on that, we created a small business grant program, um, providing a maximum of five thousand dollars. Uh, we had an opportunity to discuss this at the last town meeting. Um, and at that point, we only had two applications that met the criteria. So based on the board's input, uh, uh, again, reiterating that it's critically important to try to help small businesses. Staff, staff had an opportunity to, uh, work with some additional applicants. And obtain additional information. So we, I worked through. Our small, um, review committee, which is, uh, made up of several members of the task force. To try to work with these businesses to provide, um, enough information so we can try to get these businesses, business grants approved. So based on that, based on the criteria, which is outlined in the dashboard. Uh, we were able to work with, um, at this point. Our first recommendation is to, uh, recommend the following businesses, uh, for full five thousand dollar grants, uh, Taylor on Tall Street. Hannah's, the Antioch Theater. Sweet Discoveries, Dana Dunes, and Johnny Chapa. This, again, is our first recommendation. We, uh, continue to, are working with some businesses to gain some additional information. As of today, I had a discussion with one, uh, additional applicant. So it's my hope to bring some more recommendations through our next board meeting. But at this point in time, uh, we are recommended that, uh, grants, the full five thousand dollar grants be approved. For the businesses highlighted in my staff report. So with that, I'll be more than happy to, um, to answer any questions. As I've already outlined, uh, all these businesses. Had substantially more than twenty-five percent in sales decline. And obviously the COVID nineteen crisis has had a major negative impact. On the businesses that I've outlined. So with that. Uh, we are making a favorable recommendation, uh, for a resolution approving grants for the businesses, uh, I've outlined. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll make the motion to approve the. Grant.
Second to motion. Okay, we got a motion by trustee Dominia. We have a second by trustee Pierce. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No, I, I. I'm gonna make a statement. Um, I'm very glad we're doing this. I hope to see more businesses get, get recommended at some point. Uh, but as we mentioned earlier, there's one possible, I, I say possible, one point seven million dollars coming into the village. And I think if we cover our COVID expenses with that and we have money left over. Maybe we should be looking at helping our property owners somehow, you know, the homeowners maybe. Finding a way to give the homeowners additional relief beyond, uh, the water bill relief we've given so far.
Okay, trust, thank you, trustee Pierce, trustee Mason.
I can't believe it's just this little. So I'm, I'm actually surprised. This list only contains. This little, so. Happy to get some relief.
Okay, trustee Peterson.
I have no problem.
Okay, trustee Dominia.
Um, well, I'm, I'm obviously in support of this. And I know that you had a discussion at the committee of the whole meeting regarding the criteria. And, um, I would like to see who else applied and why they did not meet the criteria. Um, I know one of the criteria. Was that they had received a previous grant and I spoke to one of the businesses that's really struggling. She got her grant back in. May of last year. And that, whatever amount it was, five thousand dollars, whatever, that's long gone. And so I think we need to look at these criteria because. She needs that money now, because that money is gone. So I would like to know who else applied. And what criteria did they not meet? So this board can then decide, should we revise the criteria? There's another business that's struggling. Um, she missed the twenty-five percent by like three percentage points. She needs her money. She needs to be able to pay her rent. She needs to be able, you know, pay her utility. So I would ask that, um. Perhaps we put this on the next committee of the whole meeting to have a discussion about the criteria and who applied, why they didn't get accepted. And really take another look at specifically those two criteria. Uh, to help these businesses that are really struggling. Um, I know there are two businesses on Main Street that didn't even apply because. They knew they had gotten a grant.
Right.
But they're really struggling. So, um, if it would be okay with the rest of the board, I'd like to ask that we. Take another look at this in the end of the month and, uh, hopefully revise that and then maybe do a second round and invite those people who didn't. Make the criteria to try again.
Sure. Good idea. Thank you. For the suggestion. Trustee Johnson?
I fully agree with trustee Dominia. Um. I know the first, the first go-around, the PP and E, a lot of businesses, they got it. If you. Listen to what they, what they told you to do. Then you would not have to pay it back. A lot of, and put an X amount towards payroll and so forth. A lot of businesses were desperate. And use that money. So that, that money actually has to be paid back. A lot of businesses didn't qualify. Cause they got the SBA loan. That money too also has to be paid back. So technically, yes, they got those grants, but they had to pay that back anyways. Where our program is, you know, it does not have to pay back. So I think we have to reconsider and up the parameters.
Right. And then just for record, uh, I think, I think it's a great suggestion because I think there is a criteria and another point criteria is the five hundred thousand dollar. Limit in, 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 in sales. And that was another criteria that disqualified several applicants. So. There were three or four criteria points that really made it challenging for most of the businesses to qualify. So. I think that's a worthy discussion to have at the next town.
Well, your honor, can I make a comment? On those applications, we made very clearly that affirmation is gonna be confidential and private. We cannot discuss business income or any business, why they didn't qualify. Uh, money parameters, financial parameters in an open meeting. Just can't do it.
No, not, you're right, in particulars we're not.
Even a business that are failing, we can't say which business failed. We can't do that.
No, you're absolutely right.
So. We can't sit there and say, X, Y, Z business didn't qualify because they need the money now. We don't wanna say that.
And I'll take anybody here, such, any names.
So we gotta be very careful.
I agree.
I think, I think trustee makes, makes a good point. And maybe there's a way to code to say that here's.
Right.
Now, business A missed it because of X, business B missed it because of Y. I think it's a balance point.
Right, that's a fair point. Okay, we do have everybody, we do have a motion in a second. I'll have the clerk take one, please.
Here.
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
All right. Okay, five voting yes, one absent. Motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution approving a release and settlement agreement with North Shore Gas in the amount of. Twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's resolution twenty-one dash fourteen. Anybody want to explain that, Jim? What that is? For the board? Joy?
I can do, I can do it, Joy. It's. Okay. A while back, you hired an auditing firm to check on, um, to check on the, um. Gas users in town and other utilities. And this is just, uh, what they were able to come up with to adjust. But this is a, this turn, this twenty-eight, thirty, sixty-eight turns out to be a hundred percent. Of what the, um. Erroneous failure to bill or to collect taxes on some properties is. In addition to this, you'll also be getting a stream of income from the properties that have been added to the list correctly.
Okay, thank you. I only motion in a second for this resolution. I move to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve the settlement pursuant to the negotiated terms of the attached draft relief. With the North Shore Gas. Here, I have a second. Second. Okay, second by trustee Johnson. Any further questions, trustee Pierce?
No, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
No, your honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No.
Trustee Dominia?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
No, your honor.
A roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Hi.
Five voting yes, one absent. This motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution regarding the release and non-release of certain minutes of executive session, resolution twenty-one dash fifteen. I need a motion in a second.
No move.
Awesome. Motion by trustee Mason, second by trustee Pierce. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
No question.
Trustee Peterson?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominia?
No questions.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Hi.
Five voting yes, one absent. This motion is carried. This consideration of an ordinance formally adopting the zoning map effective March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one for the Village of Antioch, ordinance number twenty-one dash oh three dash oh eight.
Move to approve waiving the second reading.
Motion may by trustee Dominia to have a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Pierce. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Mason?
No questions.
Trustee Pierce?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominia?
No questions.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
A roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Ma- Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Hi.
Five voting yes, one absent. This motion is carried. Uh, administrative report, anything, Jim?
Uh, we already talked about the vaccination pod that's. Open today, so I don't have to report on that, but I would like a short, very short executive session for property acquisition.
Okay, thank you. Billis Claire?
I have no report, your honor.
Thank you. Trustee reports, uh, trustee Pierce.
You know, tonight, your honor, I have no report.
Okay, trustee Mason, I think you sent your report out earlier today.
Yep, my report went out.
Okay, trustee Peterson, anything from Parks?
No, just talked about the parade, so I've got it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Dominia?
Uh, we have planning and zoning meeting coming up this Thursday at seven o'clock. A couple items on that agenda. Um. Also, I just wanted to ask you a question for clarification. I know there was some back and forth on, um, Facebook about a resolution that had some errors in it. And I understand that resolution was corrected and placed on the website. Um, I was surprised that that resolution would be corrected without the board being made aware of it. Um, the only way I found out about it was through Facebook. So, um, is it, is it usual that if there's an error in a resolution that passed? And I know it was, and it's not, I'm not questioning what really happened, because I know what really happened. But, um, is it? Usual that you would make the decision to correct it and put it on the website without notifying the board?
It was correction of the scrivener's error. There was an error in the.
In the, in the vote, yeah, right.
Had nothing to do with the audio, but Lucian just showed the incorrect vote that was picked.
Okay, I just, in the future, something like that, I think would be helpful to know. So that, um, if people are questioning the original resolution. Then we as a board member can then explain why that changes me. Um, the other thing is I do wanna emphasize that the importance, I think, of, um, the cow meeting and, and I, I think there's consensus here. To talk about these grants because timing is really critical. If people are really, really struggling. And then, um, lastly, for those of you that don't know it, today is the International Women's Day. And, um, would've been great to have a resolution about that, but, um, this is the month of March, is Women's History Month, so perhaps. At the cow meeting, we could have a, uh. Uh, proclamation honoring of women, particularly all the women that have helped serve the Village of Antioch over the years. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dominia, uh, trustee Johnson.
Um, I, you know, I wanna, uh, give a, a thanks to, uh, uh, Jason Belucci. Um, he was not asking for a thank you or anything of sorts, but. He's been working with our police and fire department on getting them vaccinated. Um, I know he's also talked to, uh, village administrator Kime and Mayor Hansen's been, um, integral in getting this accomplished. So I don't know if the chief could, uh, give us a little. Briefing on where we're at with this, but in our police and fire vaccinated, are we still in the process and will that be done?
Sure. Not going into too much detail. We did start taking advantage of that vaccination clinic. This morning. Uh, we had a number of staff that went today and we have some other staff that are scheduled throughout the course of the week and. They're reporting everything went very smoothly.
That's great news. So once again, thanks to Jason Belucci and his assistant.
Okay. Okay. Uh, that's, uh, everybody's reports. I will, uh.
Move to go on. I'll make that motion.
The purpose of property equity or consideration of property acquisition with no action.
So move.
Motion may by trustee Dominia for a second.
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Pierce. Uh, roll call, please.
Here.
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dominia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Hi.
Five, oh, yes, one absent. Motion is carried. Okay, we'll give everybody a few minutes to clear up.